Do you have that rolling?
Yes.
Yep, alright. Welcome everyone to the Skipback Township Board of Supervisors meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order by asking everyone to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nick Fountain?
Here.
Paul Fox?
Here.
Barbara McGinnis?
Present.
Ben Webb?
Here.
Chris Helmeyak?
Here.
Barry Miller?
Here.
Tim Woodrow?
I'm here.
Joseph Adlow?
Here.
Joseph Coles?
Here.
And myself Frank Goodyangelo am present. During our executive session this evening, we discussed potential litigation as well as real estate matters. At this time, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Anyone have anything for us?
Our board president, Meredith Lotick. She's our president of the board and has done a wonderful job in keeping our building going. In the past, Skipback was present. And Skipback, yes. Skipback resident. The library's recently gone from that mask required to mask recommended in the library, which has made a lot of people happy. Not everybody. We are continuing any person's storytime that is mask required. The parents attending that are very happy for doing that, so we will continue that. The library's been doing a lot of great things trying to keep busy. We've got online programming happening, we've been sharing programs with our other branches. We do have another program coming up next week. On the 22nd, we've got, or 21st, we've got Justice, Finding Justice, which is a video about 19 minutes long that'll be shown, and then there'll be question answer afterwards. It's all about women's suffrage, that the justice bill was a symbol of women's suffrage. And apparently it's a really great story, and the director will answer questions about was the movie about women's suffrage, anything you want to say. So that one coming up. But we're doing other things too, we've got another guy doing an online program. It's at the end of April. It's a program about downsizing. His actual title of it is Your Children Don't Want It. What Should You Do With It? So, good advice if you want to downsize, get rid of things. We've got a lot of things going on as far as our ongoing trivia, our ongoing book discussion online. We are setting up for summer reading program right now. Summer reading this year is Oceans of Possibilities, which obviously is an ocean theme with lots of cool animals activities going on. We also have our park stories. I have one municipality left to get back to me, Chris already got that, that we will do a storytime in the park. This is where I go to each park in our service area. And hopefully the parents come and visit your park, and if they've never been here, they get exposed to your park and hopefully the good things that are here at Skipback. We've got a lot of things going on. You do know about our long construction project that happened in our building? We thought it was going to originally be a couple thousand dollars, over to a half a million dollars? Yeah. We are paying that bill, it's rough, we are still paying that bill off. However, we've come up recently, in the last fall, we noticed there are more cracks in the building, and we are dealing with our contractor trying to figure out how to really completely stabilize our building. We have no answers on that yet, but just to make aware, we have more building issues happening in the building. But, we are open, serving the public, doing what we can to make everybody happy. Any questions? For the library?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Do you guys have museum passes that can be checked out?
We do, we do. Right now, we, well, the board last night decided we're going to go, we have one zoo pass, we're going to get two. This conference is called here.
Does it permit admission of four people then?
It does, four, two adults, six kids.
Okay.
Yeah, it's really cool. We're at the Automotive Museum, and we also have the John Danes Audubon.
Okay.
We do have one pass expired, the children's museum box can't. But it's great, you just check it out for three days, you got it, you get everything the pass allows. The zoo one's really good because you get free food, the discount food stuff.
Oh, that's true, I like that.
Which zoo?
Elwood.
Oh, nice.
It's very popular. They're doing a lot of stuff down there too.
Yep.
Are you the branch of some fine stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
We appreciate the updates. Anyone else?
Yes.
Laura Hasworth, Clydesdale Road. I just wanted to check in on the fair hills and the trees as we're coming into spring. Okay.
We'll have an update on fair hills on the agenda, but Tim, if you quickly want to address the trees, because I know that's been a concern of yours.
Yeah, Laura, actually, in my report, I'll describe a letter that we're sending out tomorrow regarding paving. But in that letter, it also describes if anybody who has lost a tree because of the sewer project and seeks a replacement, to contact Chris, and we'll get those in ASAP.
Is there anything going to be done as far as the trees that they're taking out on the township property, like on the catchment basis?
I'm going to ask my board, I think so. I mean, you described, you know, the ability to put trees back when they're working on sidewalks and, you know, whatever. And so I believe that that is also a part of the program.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Alright.
Hi, Leslie Connor, Skipback, Sherway. On the topic of trees, I know a lot of us were really shocked and dismayed to see the trees that were cut down for harvest from the Mennonite church on Evansburg Road. It's kind of a tree canopy that you drive through when you're headed into town, and it's something we all love, and they haven't done it in 10 years. They put this whole big explanation on Facebook that it helps the forest to regrow, the ground growth, and it all comes back. But, you know, I think we'd all like to see the preservation of trees, and I just wonder if the township can promote trees in any way and help people to save their trees, that they don't have to chop them down for cost and lumber or for utilities or whatever reason. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes?
Tandy Catus, Linus Road. I know the airport is not on this topic of discussion, but I just wanted to make sure, I'm assuming that it's going to be continued on the commissionerial board towards the end of the month, this month?
That's correct, the third Monday, which is...
Not this coming Monday, the following Monday.
Maybe a week.
Two weeks, yeah, two weeks.
These are...
And then I just wanted to make sure that for that to continue, continuance meeting, but then there should also be a zoning board meeting that would, for the, I mean, for the merging of the properties?
No, that's all part of the subdivision application.
Okay, so everything will be in that meeting, that there won't be a separate?
Correct.
Okay. With that being said though, I'm just concerned about the merging of those four properties into that one. Because according to the CDO definition, that the only piece of property that is allowed to develop by the CDO is the, like, the runway tail that touches the R2 property. And therefore, the other property should not be included in the CDO. And I wanted to know the judgment on that and the legality of the issues of developing those other properties into that.
I can answer that. If the, if the, if the individual parcels are going to be merged into one, then it is the merged property which is the subject of the application. And if any portion of that merged property abuts the R2, then it is entitled to that development scheme.
But even though the CDO definition says that those two properties don't touch that R2?
The CDO definition says only those properties located in the RA Residential Agricultural District which share a boundary with property located in the R2 Residential District may be developed under the CDO. I'm totally acquainted with the language in that ordinance. And it's my opinion as land use council with the township that the properties that abut the CDO, I'm sorry, the properties that abut the R2 will be the property which is the subject of the application. It's exactly the same as, if you think of an example, let's say there was a requirement to be an eight acre lot minimum in order to avail yourself of the CDO. You might cobble together various lots to satisfy that eight acre requirement, and you'd be entitled to the CDO, even though the lots individually might not satisfy the minimum lot area requirement. The property which is the subject of the application is the property which has to satisfy that criteria. And the property which is the subject of this application will be the merged parcels as they exist today.
Wow. And I wish that someone would have explained that to the public when the CDO option was put into effect originally. Because I feel like that is very misleading to the public, that they can just add on 10 properties. I mean, they could have, they could have bought a whole entire block up and done the CDO on the whole section. Correct, is that what you're...
Well, it's just like anybody who makes a land development application, they can merge as many properties as they like into that land development application. It's strictly a matter of what their, a matter of what their ability is to acquire adjacent parcels. We nev, I'm not familiar with any zoning ordinance in this entire county which puts a maximum acreage on a land development proposal. It's just simply a matter of what the applicant can acquire that is contiguous.
Can they cross the street?
This application isn't crossing the street.
No, no, I just meant for future use, just in general. Can, can you cross the street then and add those properties into it?
That, well, because it depends on whether the properties are adjacent. It would depend on whether the individual legal descriptions came to the center line of the street or whether they were separated by the street. It would depend on whether the street was public or private.
Okay.
We're not dealing with any of those situations.
No, 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 we're not. I just, would it be different if it was a different zone? Like if one part was residential and the other was agricultural, you could not do those two separate zones together?
Well, my understanding is that...
Well, my understanding is that in order to avail oneself of the CDO, the properties have to be RA Residential Agricultural, and they need to abut the R2 district.
Okay.
So any dirt which satisfies that criteria would be entitled to development under the CDO. And I would, I would challenge your allegation that it's misleading, because that's exactly what it says.
I, I don't read it as that. I read it as that touches the R2, which is the tailpiece. And then those other two properties, the house and that lot, the L lot in the back, they don't touch R2. So I would beg or to defer to argue that those properties are not, should not be included in the CDO.
But you're saying because it becomes one property.
Property. Property which is the subject of the application is an overall tract.
Right.
And it's dealt with by this board in reviewing the application as an overall tract. It may have started out as separate parcels, but every day, a developer cobbles together separate parcels in order to satisfy a minimum tract area requirement. It's very common in zoning ordinances throughout the county. They might say that you're entitled to an assisted living facility provided that your property is three acres. Well, someone might buy a two acre property here and a two acre property here. Neither one of those properties satisfies the three acre requirement, but if they're contiguous and they bring them to the governing body as a merged parcel, the property which is the subject of the application is four acres, and it satisfies the minimum tract area requirement, even though they started off as two acres. It's exactly the same as what's happening here. This board is required to deal with this application based upon the property which is the subject of the application, which in this case is an overall tract, a portion of which abuts the R2.
Thank you, I just, I just don't agree with that.
I understand.
It's totally wrong to me, but I, I, thank you for your explanation.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything for us? Yes?
Kathy Sage, 4123, Bittenhouse Lane. People were talking about trees, it just reminded me, in case anybody doesn't already have this information and has any interest, that Perkeomen Valley School District is establishing an arboretum. They are going to have tracts at the high school and also at middle school west out in Zieglerville. And in conjunction with that, they are selling tree saplings to the general public. It's $5 per sapling, there are three different types of trees to choose from. And they will come out and deliver the trees and plant them for you anywhere you want, on private property, residential property.
Oh wow.
I'm sure that they would do it and go out to the township, were interested.
Were interested? Who, who's doing it, like who's actually?
School district. All the information is on their website, pbsd.org. And, you know, you can contact with probably anybody on the school board, or I know Judy Lofton, who used to be president of the school board two years ago. She is sort of helping run it, helping run that effort for the arboretum.
Just curious, do they have volunteers, or they hire somebody, how are they doing it?
How are they doing it?
It's going to be, I think it's going to be volunteers, I think, you know, the kids are going to, and parents are going to help
Bring it out, plant it.
Deliver the trees and plant the trees and, yeah.
Huh, good information, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Chris?
I will look that up and share that information.
That's great. Anyone else?
Lofton, L-O-F-T-O-N.
Alright. I see no other comment. With that, I'll proceed with the meeting. Proceed with the meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the February 9th, 2022 meeting. Do I have a second?
A second?
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Chris, anything on the correspondence this evening?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, sir. Who'd be one of the administrative actions? Do I have a motion to approve the treasurer's report as of February 28th, 2022?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the interim bills paid on February 25th, 2022, which include the general fund equalling $81,298.2, as well as the sewer fund coming in at $1,607.79, as well as parks and open space equalling $2,562.25. Also included bills for payment today, March 9th, 2022, which include the general fund equalling $12,649.28, sewer fund equalling $99,342.71, and finally, parks and open space coming in at $11,139.28. Do I have a second?
I will second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Reports. Tim, what do you have under your engineering report?
Couple of things this evening, Mr. DeAngelo, thank you. Back to Laura's point about the Fair Hills project. We had been contacted by Alan Myers. Recall that they were low bidding contractor for our road paving project last summer for a number of reasons. They were not able to complete that work by the time winter hit. And so they have agreed to extend the contract terms from last year till this year. And they're very anxious to get back in and get that paving done. So recall, it's a three inch milling, so we're going to take out a lot of that bad road, put in some binder and the ware and course. Should be really complete the whole scope of that Fair Hills revitalization project. And so they, actually, well, I think it tomorrow, but that's the look before pend up, otherwise allow. But, well, should be here April 1st. So I've got a letter going out to everyone in Fair Hills as well as over at Rosewood Circle, remember we have that school as well, to alert everyone that the contractor is coming. There's a bit of a schedule that is included with the letter as to where they plan to be on any given day. Day one from 1,200 to 1,400, whatever that would be. And I'm asking for some cooperation with parking and shuffling those cars around so we can get this work done efficiently and as quickly as possible. Also in the letter, I did suggest that we are ready to move forward with that tree planting project. And anybody who would like a tree replaced, to contact Chris. We'll compile that list and get our contractor in there and get some trees planted. And I'll reinforce that, I think we did talk about the area along our basins and other areas that were disturbed by that sewer project. So hopefully that's coming soon. Hopefully by next meeting, we'll have some good work done in there. And looking forward to that planting of those trees in the spring.
Tim, remind us of how long, weather permitting, it's going to take from start to finish?
Yeah, about two weeks. Yeah, about two weeks. So it's a pretty aggressive paving project, but they plan to mill and then put the base course back kind of right in a single line. And so that there shouldn't be any overnight disruption of parking or, you know, people's access. And then, you know, come back for...
Will it be topped at the end or how?
Topped at the end, so come in, get all the base repair work done, get the binder course in, and then come back and do the one shot though.
Weather, that was our operation, so I'm guessing Monday through Friday, where they start at 8:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, 9:00?
You know, we haven't had a pre-construction meeting yet that would set those terms, but typically they're going to want to start as early as they can. But I think we need, in this case, typically, to let people get out, go to work, let that traffic die down a little bit. So I'm thinking out loud, we probably 8 o'clock start, 8:30.
Yeah, it's tempting, April, you know, early April could still be loud in the morning, so we want to make sure they're where they're supposed to be.
Exactly.
Okay.
Next to my agenda, TNDL.
Only question, any questions to be answered?
So when you say Rosewood, is that the one next to Linus?
Yes.
Okay, just a quick question, because I know one of my neighbors who lives on that road is really concerned because they're speeding, I guess because of the new development, there seems to be like speeding through, like, and I didn't know if like speed bump would be something to consider at that location. I know it makes it hard for plow trucks.
Yeah, we typically don't put speed humps in... Put speed humps in our residential neighborhoods. But, you know, certainly there are other ways we can stop traffic. If that does become a problem, I think we can, you know, come up with some alternative means.
And just so, for the record, it's not just for plow trucks, it's most importantly for emergency vehicles.
They hate them, you know, fire trucks and illnesses that don't want them.
I, I live there too, so I'm kind of concerned about them, you know, speed bumps down as well.
Gotcha.
So that's why.
Have, we can talk to a point about the drainage issue on Clydesdale, did she get to look into that?
Yeah.
The header?
Yeah, we actually, Ed Slaw from my office walked with the guys from Myers. I'm taking some survey shots and we're, you know, going to get that fixed.
Okay.
Yes.
And the cul-de-sac, that part?
Yeah. Yeah. It, it, it's tricky, as Laura knows, the back of that cul-de-sac is really flat. And there's not a convenient storm saw to tie into. We, surveyors shot some rays, we think they can pick the back end of that cul-de-sac up a bit and get everything to drain, but it's going to be, you know, some very specific paving work that we'll try to get through. Indeed.
You were continuing?
TNDL, Total Maximum Daily Loaded. We've been talking about this EPA program enacted by DEP for a number of years. And recall that Skipback is part of a partnership with five other, three, four other municipalities. Hatfield, Worcester, Lower Province, Tallemanson, and Torre, I'm missing.
Lower South?
Hatfield, yeah, Lower South for that. But Worcester, us, oh us, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
At any rate, so this TNDL is a study that was done by the EPA that studied the Skipback Creek. And it determined how much nutrient load it could carry in any given day and remain healthy. Like many of the streams, all of the streams in Eastern Montgomery County, the Skipback is impaired for sediment pollution. And so this program is meant to reduce sediment pollution in the streams and help to heal that impaired waterway. All the others do, Indian Valley, Wissahicken, Spartan School, all have similar studies that are attached to them. But it is a mandated obligation to the municipalities to help, you know, repair these watercourses. And so we are part of this consortium, we've been working with DEP over the last number of years. We've got a plan in place that specifies projects in each town that would be completed, stream bank stabilization, basin construction, basin retrofits, impervious surface removal, all things to wrap all five municipalities in the watershed. And we're getting very close to DEP approving that plan. As part of that plan, there needs to be an agreement that binds all five municipalities together. So on Monday, Chris and I met over in Lower Province with solicitors, managers, engineers from all those towns, talking about the plan and also talking about the agreement. We gave a couple of solicitors some tasks, updating that agreement to cover things like better defining cost sharing, what happens if we have a problem, all kinds of things. But we are hoping that by next month, we're going to have a draft for you guys all to consider and execute and, you know, put that forward to complete the process. What that does obligate, once it's signed and once DEP approves, is that we would participate in projects in each town by shared costs. Skipback would bear about 17% of the cost of the projects. Tallemanson is about 44% of the cost of the projects. They've got a much denser area, they've got a lot bigger watershed, they've got a bigger sediment reduction, reduction, they're obligated to provide some Tallemanson bears the lion's share of the cost. The others of us are, you know, about the same. The one thing that we really think is important about the partnership is that we will really be put at the top of the list, we believe, for grant funding. You know, if we're here as a consortium, as people working together in the watershed, as a total run, as individuals, you know, we hear from everybody, DEP included, that we will be, you know, favorably viewed when it comes to grant applications. And so the agreement actually talks about how we apply for grants as well. So all part of this more major study. But that's the 10,000 put view for today. Get that for more information as it becomes available and you kind of grind through some of the DEP process. But certainly any questions, I'm happy to answer. It is a complicated topic.
We've been talking about this for a while. It's like we're getting to actually formalizing this. Do we see any actual projects for this year's calendar?
No.
Okay.
And the only reason is that we, we could jump out ahead, but, but DEP wants to approve the plan and approve the projects to make sure that they are all, you know, in accordance with their requirements before we go too far ahead of them.
Alright, well, that's good, I mean, that's been a lie this year then. So we should make sure a plan for next year, in our pledge.
Yep, absolutely.
Gotcha.
I'm just...
I knew I had questions.
That's a... Tina Drive?
Yeah, Deb, how are you?
Tina Drive, I'm good. So I was doing a little reading on this. So are you at the point where we have a, it's called a pollution reduction plan in MSY? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes, there's a lot of buzzwords out there, Deb. So the PRP, Pollution Reduction Plan, is part of the whole study that we're providing to DEP in response to the TNDL. In response to the TNDL. We also have a PRP for the Skipback Creek, I mean, for the Perkeomen Creek.
Right.
So the Skipback has a TNDL, Perkeomen Creek does not have a TNDL, but it has a pollution reduction plan obligation as well. And so we have put forth that plan in DEP as Skipback as an individual.
Right. That's what I was discussing, it's very confusing online.
Yeah.
So we're part of a consortium for...
For the Skipback Creek, but not part of a consortium for the Perkeomen Creek. Although... Although we do actively stay in touch with Ryan and the folks over at the Consortium. So that's part of the conversation. And most of what we've talked about as far as our pollution reduction plan for the Perkeomen Creek is in the form of some stream bank stabilization projects. We'll see if DEP likes that. They originally were very much in favor of that. But they said, well, you know, we prefer that we don't treat the symptoms of the disease, we treat the cause of the disease. Disease being the erosion of the stream banks. Someone would prefer you do is, you know, go up higher in the watershed and remove impervious cover and build detention basins and do those kinds of things. The problem is that that real estate is doing tough to come by. And, you know, it's really difficult to remove impervious surface from private properties. But it's certainly, you know, part of the discussion, so we're back sort of just... The other thing that's kind of happening, that's kind of urging this along, is this fellow Jim McTish that DEP is retiring end of the summer, and he is pushing everybody to get everything in and done and formalized so they can improve it before he retires. So that's kind of part of the push as well.
Mike, hi, Karen Lynch, 4014, Serenity Street. My, my question is that the most recent storm, which was quite devastating, had anything to do with what accelerated these plans or impacted these plans in some way?
I don't think so, no.
No.
Because we've started this conversation in 2005, is when this all kind of came.
Is when this all kind of came to fruition.
It's been a long time.
And, and there's been a lot of just misunderstandings between DEP's goals and EPA's goals and what local obligations were. And it took a long time to kind of figure that all out. And DEP has, has modified their guidance a number of times in that 17-year period. We were actually very close right before COVID hit, and then COVID kind of paused everything for us. We were having the... We were having those meetings, municipal, you know, partnerships, and then we stopped. And so I think now with, you know, things opening a little bit more, I think that's another reason why people are trying to regain the energy we had a couple of years ago.
Sam Angel, 384, Giant Circle. My question was just going to be regarding, I noticed that Central Perkioman Park, I guess that's the Swainsville side, they took down the old Mill House. Does that help with this, with what you're talking about?
Yes, I don't know.
Two-pronged question, so.
Yeah, I don't know if that was part of their obligation that Perkioman, you know, pursued. But certainly anytime you're removing, you know, a structure or impediment adjacent to the water course, you're improving, obviously. A lot of what we are dealing with now are really coming from kind of legacy sins of the past. You know, development that was done in the 50s, 60s, 70s, 80s that were really before stormwater management came in to, you know, bogue. And even in the 90s and early 2000s, you know, the, the industry had not matured and what we were doing for stormwater was not as visionary as what we're doing today. So that's all part of this discussion. So, yeah, anytime you can remove perisurface, you can move back and improve the repair and cordon. You're making beneficial.
So the second part of that question is, I've noticed that the, the house is right across the street from LPI Park. All got devastated by the flood, right? And it seems to me that there's a bunch that are for sale now privately. It's going to be difficult. It's zoned as residential. I didn't know. The township, whatever.
Yes.
Chris can speak on that?
I can.
On that?
I can.
Okay. And maybe it wasn't appropriate time, Deb?
No, no, it's a fine time, Sam. It's all part of that whole, you know, goal to help improve, you know, the water quality, yes.
So, yeah, so after the hurricane, the devastation, there is a program through FEMA. It's called the Hazard Mitigation Program, Grant Program. The way it's administered is the federal government gives money to, to the municipality to basically purchase the properties in the floodplain that are damaged and repeatedly damaged and in high danger areas for flooding and destruction in the future. And then you can buy those properties out, knock the houses down and create parkside, or creekside park space, open space. So it's completely voluntary program. I believe our application that I submitted had twelve, eleven homeowners who were interested in participating and submitted the paperwork. So there are that possibility. There's some on Skidback Pike of that number, and then some are over on the Penn Lakeside Drive side of the creek. So those two areas have submitted some applications, some weren't interested. Everyone in that area got letters about the program. Only again, eleven gave their paperwork in to participate potentially. Again, it's completely voluntary all the way up to the moment they sign the paperwork and settlement. So we would get the money from the federal government, seventy-five percent of the costs. And then the other twenty-five percent of the cost is covered actually by the state of Pennsylvania. So it wouldn't cost the township any money and we would get those properties. Obviously, it would cost us money in maintenance technically in the future, but compared to the dangers of having people in that area, it looks okay.
So is the, is the price basically set by the state to have the federal government or?
So, no. So the whole pro, it's a whole process. There's appraisals that have to be done by state certified appraisers. And the way the program's been explained is they, how they do it, I don't know. They, they try to figure out what the value of the property was the day before the disaster.
Understood.
And that's the value that we can pay for the property. The homeowner can at their expense get their own appraisal. And what they've said is if their appraisal comes back higher, we can split the difference. But if it comes back lower, we forget that they even did it, and whatever our appraisal says is what they get.
So let me ask.
Assuming they want to sell.
This will be my last question, I promise.
That's fine.
So I drive past it, right, and I see four sale signs up there now. So does the township have the ability to block a private sale?
No.
No, that's definitely not what we're trying to do.
I don't know where the federal government have the ability to block.
Again, this program is a hundred percent voluntary.
Okay.
And they're good all soon. And with, with the eleven that are there, if everything stays course, it's going to be a lot more open than what everybody's looking.
We hope everyone participates who submit their paperwork. But again, all the way up until the very last second, they can say, we change our money.
I just didn't know if there's like CNO permits that need to be reissued since the storm basically damaged all those homes.
We cannot stop someone from using their property. There are certain requirements to rebuild their properties.
Understood.
In terms of flood grouping and raising them above the flood height, things like that. But we can't stop them from using their property.
But Sam, to your point, if those folks do choose to enter the program and we raise the properties and we regitate and return to open space, we can then take credit for that stream bank improvement on our PRC.
But that's great. It's part of the program. I like it.
Bringing it all together.
Looks good. Sounds good.
Thank you. Here's Ross. Is that?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Tim. Moving on. Barry, anything under your solicitor's report?
Not too much, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Zadlo, anything under your planners' report?
I can't.
Thank you. And Chris, right back to you, under your managers' report.
Yes, I just have the special event permit request. This is an annual one by the Skidback Lions Club for their annual five K and one mile fun run. This year it's on June 25th.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the special event permit for the Skidback Lions Club five K and one mile fun run, June 25th, 2022?
I'll make a motion. I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All business. I see we have 1052 Bridge Road. I will turn to you, Mr. Coles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You'll recall that the board at its last public meeting on March 9th, sorry, February 9th, conducted a public hearing on the outstanding conditional use application of 1052 Bridge Road Associates LLC. At the completion of that hearing, we stated for the public that the municipality's planning code required a decision on that application within forty-five days of the closure of the hearing and that that decision would most likely be made this evening. So I would ask if there is a motion to approve the conditional use application of 1052 Bridge Road Associates LLC permitting the enterprise development option standards for a six-unit townhome development at 1052 Bridge Road in the township's VC Village Commercial District, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with all comments in the January 12th, 2022 letter from Skidback Township Engineer Woodrow Associates. Two, the applicant shall comply with all comments in the January 17th, 2022 letter from the Skidback Township land planner, Joseph A. Zadlo. Three, the development and use of the tract shall substantially conform to the testimony and exhibits presented at the public hearing on this matter, including without limitation the one sheet, November 24th, 2021 zoning exhibit plan. Four, the number of townhome units shall not exceed six. Condition five, any expansion of the townhome buildings or other structures will require a new or amended conditional use approval prior to the issuance of any associated building permit. And finally, condition six, that the applicant shall obtain land development approval for the proposed project. Is there such a motion?
So with that being said, and guidance and advice from staff, does anyone have any additional questions before we proceed with this? I know we've now all had a chance to do our due diligence.
I had no questions.
You see none? So with that, thank you, Joe.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to approve the 1052 Bridge Road Associates LLC conditional use?
I'll make the motion with the stated conditions.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
New business. I see Dean and Lisa Noss.
Oh, I had, on our.
On our.
Where are we with the streetlights?
They are still putting together the final evaluation. They did go out, I believe it was last week, and did the actual out on the road auditing work. So they are now formulating the final report and a value, or proposal for cost of the program. And they should be presenting that here in the next week or so.
Okay.
And then he will, the, the man, the guy who came here before from the consultant, will have that report and will come to you guys.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Sorry.
No, you're fine. With that, back to Dean and Lisa Noss for the subdivision.
If you want, we do have John Hunt from the engineer's office. If you have any questions, he's here to answer any questions. That's a simple two-lock subdivision on Squirrel Hill Road.
Right, which we all were made aware of. Anybody have any questions regarding that? I do not.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, seems cut and dry. No questions?
No.
All right. With that, do I have a motion to approve for Dean and Lisa Noss, the preliminary final minor subdivision for 2135 Squirrel Hill Road?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And lastly, I see here on the new business, the ordinance 359, emergency services cost reimbursement ordinance. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance number 359?
So what is it? Hold on, give me a second.
Nothing's changed, I don't know.
No. So this is what we, we spoke at the end of last meeting. It's the ordinance that allows the fire company to charge insurance companies for the cost of materials they use at a road accident scene.
Yes, yes, thank you.
That's what this is.
I will make the motion for ordinance number 359.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Before they beat up over there from the fire company.
With that, anyone have anything to add on their new business? I see nothing. Thank you for coming out. Me too, Jer.